All right, let's call the meeting to order, please. The first item on our agenda is a closed session. If someone can please read us into a closed meeting, that would be helpful.
Yes, pursuant to the Virginia Freedom of Information Act, I move that the board convene a closed meeting for the following purpose: to discuss or consider the identified subject matter personnel under Section 2.2-3711A1, in particular, staff resignations, leave of absence, position adjustment, EPED assignments, and advisory committee reappointments.
Thank you very much. Thank you for that second. We'll be back in a few minutes. All right, can someone please get us back, reconvene to an open meeting, and certify the closed meeting?
Yes, Madam Chair, whereas the Falls Church Public School Board has convened a closed meeting on this date pursuant to an affirmative recorded vote and in accordance with the provisions of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act, and whereas Section 2.2-3711B of the Code of Virginia requires a certification by this school board that such a closed meeting was conducted in conformity with Virginia law, now therefore be it resolved that the Falls Church Public School Board hereby certifies that to the best of each member's knowledge. One only public business lawfully exempted from the open meeting requirement by Virginia law were discussed in the closed meeting, to which this certification applies, and two only such public business matters as were identified in the motion convening the closed meeting were heard, discussed, or considered.
Second?
Do you reconvene us to another meeting?
I would move that we reconvene in an open meeting.
Thank you.
Second.
All right, now I think we can do the real call.
Mr. Ankuma. Yes. Mr. Castillo.
Yes.
Ms. Carney.
Yes.
Mr. Lawrence.
Yes.
Mr. Sharp.
Here.
Okay. Ms. Ward.
Here.
And Mr. Webb.
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, thank you very much. The next thing we'll do is the Pledge of Allegiance, if you'll join us.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under our, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Thank you. The next item on the agenda is actually the adoption of the agenda. Is there a motion to adopt the agenda as presented?
So moved.
Thank you very much. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And are there any opposed or abstentions? No, hearing none, we've adopted the agenda for this evening. The next is public comments and requests. I don't have any slips here. Mr. Kimball, are there any folks here for public comments, or are there other things that we need to read into the record?
Not to my knowledge, ma'am.
Thank you very much. I appreciate that. Oh, fun. Next thing is recognition reports. We have the GM Robotics team here with us. Dr. Jones, do you want to say a few words, or?
I think we will invite Mr. Blue because he is such a master at this. Now I'll turn it over to you, Mr. Blue. You've had a great season.
Thank you very much. I have a challenging task tonight. Part of what I'm trying to do is to communicate the incredible excitement and just amazing experience we had this year in our robotics season. First of all, we'd like to introduce our entry. That was in the finalists, in the finals of two regionals. I don't think we have ever had a robot where we had as much success and as much excitement as this one. Not only were we in the finals, we were the captains of the alliances that made it almost to the championship. And with just hair breadth competition, the stats that are posted on the Blue Alliance, which is a, you know, a public forum, might give you an idea of exactly how successful, you know, we were ranked second in the Virginia Regional with a record of 12, 4-0, and, you know, this is, you know, just the scores that are posted, you can see that we were scoring well in the hundreds almost all of the time. A very, very successful play, and then when we went to the DC tournament, we dropped all the way down to 27th at one time, made our way all the way up to number seven, became captains of the sixth alliance, and went all the way to the finals against the number one alliance, and lost after four matches, not just three. It was just an incredible experience. As the underdogs, of course, we had the whole crowd on our side. It was just great fun, and we had some, you know, just some amazing experiences. But these are the guys who put the work and the time and effort into making this thing successful, and it's their story. So let me turn it over to our team director.
So, this year, for those who don't know, the game was relatively simple compared to past years. We had to gather this ball here, as you can see, and we had to pass it off to other robots and score into a goal. That's about it, but, yes, there was a truss in the middle of the field as well, but the game itself is fairly simple. Shane, you want to drive it around a bit? Just go forward and backward. So, we actually have mechnum drive this year, which means that our robot can go sideways as well as forward and backward, which is a rather nice feature to have when you're fighting against other robots and trying to maneuver around. I am the one who actually drove it this year, not him, which is why it's not very good. Would you like to trade off, Shane?
This is, of course, very, very carefully driven, but on the field, it's full tilt. We'll drain a motorcycle battery in about two and a half minutes. The, you know, the power consumptions are something that are pretty amazing, but we also have this wonderful programmed interface, which Shane was very much part of developing, which also allowed us to be a very, very successful robot. The interface shows, a graphic interface, of almost everything the robot does, and remote controls on one of those eight platforms.
Sweet.
All right, so the basic functions that we had this year were that we have a goal suspended above the field that we have to be able to fire into. So for that, we have a shooting mechanism here, as well as an ability to actually spit it out through our accumulator, because there was also a low goal. And we use that if we had trouble getting to the high goal or lining up because of defense. So, Mr. Blue, if you want to catch action. And then we have our accumulator there, which would suck in the ball, or it could also spit it back out. And that was for low goals. We also, you saw it earlier, the catapult arm is auto winching. A problem that we were having early on is that if you drive it with just a motor, the power required to hold it down will actually burn out that motor. So what we did is actually Nettie spent a very long and difficult journey reverse engineering a gearbox so that he could add a winch.
So we got this kit called a Modulox Gearbox Kit, which is a modular building system for gearboxes. Oh, it's simple, the parts all go together easily, you can do it in a few hours, but obviously we had to make some modifications, as Shane said, so this ended up being almost a two-week project of mine. So some things that we wanted to incorporate into it to make it work a little better for our purposes, because we wanted it to be releaseable so we can actually fire the catapult.
And our releasing, as well as our arm, are controlled by pistons, which are cylinders with air in them that allow them to move loads, such as that. So what would happen is that we, when we want to fire, we have a piston which will push an arm that pulls out the gear in the gearbox so that it can release, and then puts it back in so that we can winch it down. And this is powered by, originally, rubber tubing, however, we switched to spear gun tubing, which was much heavier duty, and it gave us more reliability, as well as being more durable in the long run.
Sweet.
Behind all this, of course, is that we were in a competition in Richmond with 65 other high schools, and in a competition in DC with 51 other high schools. We ended up having one of the most successful ways of picking the ball up. We were always at, you know, the scoring end of the action. Really, it was a testament to how hard they worked to get this combination of ideas working together, integrated into a design. It drove beautifully on the field, it is championship caliber in many ways, but it's still a student-built robot, and that's also a feature that I'm particularly proud of. We received the Industrial Design Award recognition at the Virginia Regional, and of course, we were finalists, so that means we got the silver medal instead of the gold medal, which, but. Had both, right. And, you know, the, just the, you know, their success on the field is something that I find, again, it's a lot of fun, it's very exciting, it's, you know, it's a thrilling experience to witness and to, you know, to visit one of these competitions, but it really is a validation process that I think is, you know, particularly important, what we believe in as a school system. We think it's important that these guys have the, you know, the persistence and the trial and error experience it takes to put something like this. This is, represents many, many assemblies and disassemblies and rearrangements and revisions, and we were able to succeed despite a very, you know, difficult schedule in the middle of all that snow, and we're still able to field an excellent robot. And it was just a very, from my perspective as a teacher, I couldn't have had a better report to make, and, you know, this team is, which is not all here, which has grown, and you'll notice that I have a number of additional adult mentors who have been helping. Dustin Spinkouza is not here, who's joined us and helped with the programmers, put together a very, very excellent program in as great an educational manner as I can imagine. He was, you know, asked questions and didn't do it for them, and had them go trial and error and tested, and we, that procedure has been, you know, something that has been very, very thrilling and very, very much a mandate, I think, for, you know, the kind of experiential education I think we're moving towards. So, the other thing is, these young men were responsible for nominating me for an award, which I have always envied. I received the Woody Flowers Award at the DC Regional, which basically is a testament to their support for what we do as teachers, and it's something that, you know, again, I, that's, of all the things that are related to FIRST Robotics, the Woody Flowers, who's a professor emeritus at MIT, is probably the best spokesperson for what education is all about and why the robotics program is important, and being associated with that award is a moment of a lifetime.
So, in regards to a few things that we actually did outside the workshop and the competition field this year, we wanted to get a little more into the outreach, which is really what a big part of FIRST is all about. So Mr. Blue actually got us a spot at his wife's elementary school, Graham Road Elementary School. We got a spot for three Thursday afternoons, and we went over and we took all our first Lego kits, and we helped them work through a problem and build a robot, basically just like what we're doing, and they did all the programming and everything, and they came out really well. So that was a lot of fun. It got a little bit short because our competitions were after that, but we hope to go back very soon, hopefully maybe a little more this year, a little more next year. We hope to continue that tradition. We did the same workshop that we've done in December for the whole greater DC area. FIRST teams all around the area are welcome to come out and learn all about how to do everything on the robot, even stuff off the robot like safety and just team management, business plan, stuff like that. And one more event we helped host was the FIRST Lego League competition that was actually at MEH. We helped out with that, we took our robot to show the kids, we helped with setup and cleanup, and that was another good experience.
Another thing is, this year, a lot of our senior members on the team are actually graduating, so this was also a training year for our team, and that means that, so, okay, a lot of the younger members of our team, who I was going to point out, but some of them aren't here, so Matt Fuentes and, stand up, and Tim Winters were actually working on leading the programming team this year. This is the first year we've actually had to be able to have a team, which was nice. Yes, of programmers. We've had a robotics team. It also meant we were able to broaden what we were able to do, such as vision tracking for our autonomous. Another thing is Nettie, who is in 11th grade, and Abhijit and Adam were responsible mainly for building the frames in the past, so they spent this year teaching younger people. And Adam also has done all of our pneumatics in the past, and he's spent his time teaching a protege. Do you want to talk about that, Adam? I like putting people on the spot. I suppose just to mention a few more names on the team who have stood out this year, who are on the younger side. One of the most notable is Darius over there, who is currently in 9th grade, and I'll be honest, I don't tend to expect much from 9th graders, I expect them to be learning stuff and not knowing stuff, but Darius has done an amazing job this year. He was actually on the drive team, and he's the only freshman I know of to be on the drive team for our team, so, and he did his job very well. So I would definitely like to commend Darius for doing a very good job this year. Jacob, right there, was one of our main scouters at the competition, which meant he walked around to all of the other teams, talked to them, figured out game plans, who he liked, who he didn't like, who he wanted to be on a team with, and that's a big job when there's 50 to 60 teams at a competition. And Jacob has done a very good job of doing that this year as well, he did it last year, and hopefully he'll be able to do it next year, or at least find someone to replace him. Yep, he's going to be here. So, yeah, so, like we said, we are losing six, I believe, no, five seniors this year, which is a lot more than last year, where we only really lost one senior. So, the team will have a fun time next year figuring stuff out, but I'm fairly sure they'll be, I'm sure they'll be able to, yes, I'm sure they'll be able to do it. Nettie and Darius are both very good at building the robot, Matt and Timmy are both very good at programming it, and I know the rest of the team is either learning to do these various tasks, or are already good enough, and I'm just forgetting names, so.
Ladies and gentlemen, thank you very much for your continued support of this program. We're going to continue doing outreach all during the rest of the year. We have a couple of other smaller competitions to get other people to practice with, but we'll be rethinking and, you know, what we have to do again for next year. We always regroup, but we want to say how much we appreciate your support for an amazing season. So thank you very much. We have a website that they have initiated here. Go ahead and log it in while we drive out, and we invite you to go and, at your leisure, visit that site.
Yeah, so we want to share our new website with you, just because we wanted to update our site. We were inspired by some of the other teams' websites we saw, and we sort of wanted to bring our old website to the next level. So, there are two ways you can get to it. The main problem we have right now is we have an unpleasant URL, but we're working on that to get the company, because we're nonprofit, to get our domain, so the easiest way to get to it is to go to our old website. So if you go to Team1418 or search in Google, the first one here, Team1418.org. And at the top here, we have this nice red banner here that says we're making a new website. So if you click "Learn More," it's going to bring you to the site. Here you can see the URL, it's kind of, it's Team1418.wix.com/Team1418. So we're hoping we'll be able to use Team1418.org on that, but we just wanted to share this out because we're trying to incorporate social media and everything with our website, because we've been sort of sheltered. So, this website's under heavy construction, so we have the basics right now, so you can learn about our robot, all of our statistics and game, and then you can learn about the team, and then we have a big media section, so you can view photos and videos from our most recent competitions. We have a contact page and a blog, so if you want to read some of the stories we've written about what we've been doing, and both on and off-season, so feel free to go check us out, Facebook, Twitter, and YouTube, so if you use those websites, you can check us out there, so, all right.
This is really journeying through quite a comprehensive experience.
It is, yeah.
The fact that these guys have all taken ownership and initiated a lot of this stuff, the practices they are starting out to get up a caliber where they can qualify for some of the much more complex awards that first offers, like the chairman's award, we're going to try and apply for that next year. But it's this kind of outreach, these kinds of things, like a webpage, you know, initiative to, you know, present publicly a message of what they're learning, what their history's all about, to, you know, and have all engineering expertise goes into making these decisions.
Yeah. Thank you. Now, thank you for coming. This is so fun to see what you guys have done. Congratulations on a great season, and we can't wait to see you next year.
All right, Mr. Kimball, do I understand that we do have someone here who would like to?
There is.
Okay.
Yes.
Yeah, is there someone in the audience who wanted to address the board? Yeah, come for it.
I'm just going to the microphone.
Yeah, if you'll come to the microphone and tell us your name and where you live.
My name is Janet Ten, we live in 142 Spring Court. I just wanted to say, we lived in this city since my son was a kindergartner. I never seen him so enthusiastic about a school program, and I'm working like seven days, 11 hours, 12 hours every day. I don't need to push him like other things, like, hey, you have to do this, and he did everything because he wanted to be in the team, and I just suddenly see the change, like he become mature, he's responsible for his own thing, and, you know, he participate everything. I did not have time to drive him to just walk, you know, in like 13 degrees temperature and to school and lay home. So I said, this is a very great program, I wanted to support, and I hope you can support it.
Great, thank you so much. That's wonderful. All right. It's my favorite thing, when we have our students come and show us the great things that they're doing. All righty, the next thing is item 6 on the agenda, which is the Consent Agenda. And is there a motion to approve the Consent Agenda as presented? Thank you. Is there a second? All in favor, please say aye. Aye. Are there any opposed or abstentions? All right, the Consent Agenda has been approved as presented, great. Business Action Information, Approval of Resolution 02-14 VSB A 2014 Business Honor Roll. Dr. Jones.
This is something that we try to do each year, and it's really us signing off and saying thank you for all of the businesses that support us throughout the year, and so the resolution, I know we have that for everybody to sign, I'm not sure if that's already up here on the dice or not, but we will be asking our businesses also that we're recognizing this year to come before us like we've done in the past, so we're looking forward to that. Mary Beth Conley leads on that for us.
All right. Any questions about that, or is there a motion to approve this? Mr. Sharp?
Just a quick point, I have, I'm the liaison to the BIE, and I was privileged to be present as this process was unfolding, to select the winners, and it was a really pretty lengthy and detailed process. A lot of the groundwork done, of course, by Mary Beth Conley to put together the really, really long list of events and other contribution types of activities that various businesses did, and several of the businesses were on the list for numerous things that they had done during the year, and it was among those that had been the most active, that these that you see before you were selected. There were, as I recall, 10 that were initially selected to be semi-finalists, and these are the ones that had gained the recognition from the entire advisory committee, and so I just want to say that these are certainly worthy of recognition, and I thank all the committee members and Mary Beth for all their work in getting this process to reach a good result. Thank you.
Excellent, and thank you for your part in that, Kieran, as the liaison. So would you like to make a motion to approve, Mr. Sharp?
Make a motion to approve the resolution as presented.
Thank you so much. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Are there any questions, or shall we call the vote? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed or any abstentions? All right, very good. That's a fun thing to do. We have so many businesses in the city that support our schools. I know it's a hard decision for the committee to make, but a good thing to do. Next is approval of tuition rates. I presume this is for the 2014-15 school year. Dr. Jones.
Just in that, the recommendation is $5,000 for Jesse Thackeray Preschool, of course, has a sliding scale if necessary, $15,840 for tuition at Mount Daniel, $15,300 for Thomas Jefferson, $16,740 for Mary Ellen Henderson, $18,000 for George Mason High School. There is $150 per student application. Of course, we do have student parking fee at $200 as well. And just as a reminder, we do have tuition students at Jesse Thackeray. We had our first parent meeting last week. But at Mount Daniel, Thomas Jefferson, and Mary Ellen Henderson, we do not take any tuition students right now, so I just don't want people to think that we're talking about being overcrowded and we're also allowing tuition. We do have room at the high school for next year, and so we can allow up to 20 spots. That probably won't last very long, but that just lets you know, we do have the rate set, but that doesn't mean we necessarily take students.
All right, thank you very much. Are there questions, anyone has about this matter?
So does that mean?
Yeah, turn on your microphone.
So does that mean that we have a waiting list of folks willing to attend the high school from the outside?
At the high school, we don't have a waiting list right now, but if somebody applies for tuition, they interview with the principal, they look at their transcripts and see if we can meet their needs and vice versa. So we are accepting, but, you know, most people in our high school, unless they really know, it's hard to get the word out that we actually have some tuition spots open, and we're working on that, because we don't normally have them necessarily open, and especially people who have called when they are younger, you know, we've been closed for several years at the elementary and middle level.
Any other questions about this? All right, is there a motion to approve the tuition rates?
Yes, Madam Chair, I move that the Falls Church City Public School Board approve the tuition rates as proposed.
Thank you very much. Is there a second to that?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Webb, and all in favor, please say yes. I mean, aye, aye. Are there any opposed? All right, that carries. Thanks. any opposed? Alright, that carries. Thanks very much. The next is the quarterly budget status report. Mr. Kimball?
Yes, hi. I'll tell you, just as an aside, previously, in previous years, I was preparing a monthly budget status report, and we decided to go ahead and move to a quarterly budget status report, which has actually allowed me more time to go in and really drill down into the numbers. And I feel like I could spend more time and that I'm better able to provide a better report. So, I thank the board for that. At this point, with our third quarter of the fiscal year ended as of March 31st, each of the funds, the school operating budget, the community service fund, and the food service fund are projected to end the year with positive balances. The operating budget with about $265,000, the community service fund about $78,000, and the school food service fund between $21,000 and $22,000. Just to let you know, as far as the school operating budget goes, that this projection does factor in the decisions that the school board made during their budget development process in terms of use of the current year contingency, the delay of the bus purchase, those kinds of things. Those assumptions are factored in here. As far as the community service fund goes, the, an issue with collecting revenue there has been resolved, so we're moving full steam ahead on that. And that looks very positive. And as I mentioned to the school board in the cover memo, continue to work very closely with Mr. Kane on the school food service fund. There have been a number of challenges this year. Meal sales have not been one of them, honestly. The biggest challenges have been lost revenue because of the snow days. Every snow day, we lose between $3,500 and $4,000. It's quite significant. And then also, food prices have gone up this year, and Mr. Kane does keep his ear to the ground. And food prices are expected to go up again next year. This is primarily weather-related. So, we are working on strategies to address that, both in terms on the expense side and on the revenue side. We'll probably, and we'll be bringing more information to the board later this spring about that. But at this point, we're in a very good position this year. And as you can see on the second page of the memo, with our projected total ending balances in each fund, we have adequate funds to meet the amount of carryforward budgeted for next year to support next year's budgets. And then, if everything were to, if I were exact down to the penny, how much it would then leave us to use in FY16 to apply to that budget. So, that's where we're at right now. Be happy to answer any questions if you have any.
Alright, so anyone have any questions about that? Mr. Lawrence?
Just one quick one. You said that the $90,000 that was owed from Park and Rex has been resolved?
It has. That transfer was made last week.
Okay. But your projected available fund balance of $416, on the second page, stays the same for community services? Because I assume you figured they would pay at some point?
At this point, that, it would go up by-
Go up by the $90.
Yes, yes, it would.
So, that's over $500. Okay.
Because it was a question mark up until that.
Okay, I didn't know if your projected balance-
Yes. And actually, because the transaction actually took place after I had prepared these reports. So, it was a lot of stuff happening at once.
Yeah, no, I was wondering if-
Thank you, Mr. Lawrence.
-you were being optimistic and assuming it was going to get worked out.
Oh, I'm never optimistic.
You're never optimistic.
That's not his job. Alright, any other questions about this?
I also have the same question.
Okay. Alright, Mr. Kimball, just for the community's knowledge, in the community services budget, we hold the reserve for the daycare program. And how much of the dollars that we have here represent that reserve roughly?
The daycare reserve is currently about, I think around $350,000 right now.
Alright, so it's certainly material to the numbers that we see here. And that reserve is generated by parents paying for extended daycare. So-
Yes.
I just want to be sure the community doesn't think that we have, you know, $400,000 or $500,000 sitting in this budget not doing anything.
Then that is a point well taken. And also, as an aside, it's part of the daycare board's internal policy that that reserve that they maintain represents three months of their operating expenses.
Yes. Thank you for that. Thank you for that. Alright. The next item on the agenda is the approval and adoption of Language Arts and Social Studies textbooks. That explains why some of you are here. Alright, please come forward and let's talk about that. Dr. Jones, do you have a few words to say, or shall they just get started? Go ahead. Do it. I'm sorry.
Good evening. I'm excited tonight to have with me five of our best and brightest to share with you the curriculum review and materials review that we've done for two of our content areas, both social studies and language arts. And we'll begin with our social studies review with Rory Dipple, who's our curriculum instructional resource teacher for social studies at the middle school, and also Jeannie Seabridge, who is representing the high school tonight. And then I will introduce the rest of you in a few minutes.
Rory.
Thank you. Good evening, school board members and Superintendent Jones. On behalf of the eighth grade World History textbook committee, we are making a strong recommendation for the adoption of the World History I Prentice Hall textbook by Ellis Essler. The committee was comprised of the reading specialists at the middle school, both world history teachers, a special education teacher, an ESAL teacher, Ms. Ashaheed, and myself. When the committee assembled this fall and winter, we looked at many different components of what makes a textbook great. We looked at authorship, reading levels, supplementary materials, content and methodology, but then we also looked at our particular students at MEHMS. The list that we compiled beyond those that I mentioned were the importance of outstanding maps and visuals and charts, strong vocabulary support, religious sensitivity, meaning that was in-depth and balanced and fair, skill-building activities, like primary source activities, differentiated reading, Spanish glossary and text, and an interactive and useful online component. What I mean by that is we didn't want just a textbook that students could access online. We wanted to find a textbook that had videos that students could click on to learn more about a particular topic, and also an online vocabulary support system. So, well beyond just having a textbook, which was what it was in the past when I did the textbook committee. The committee found that the Prentice Hall textbook had the strongest support for all the areas mentioned except for one. The whole book had outstanding resources for English language learners, which was the only area that Prentice Hall did not score the highest for the committee. However, Prentice Hall has a clear Spanish glossary, resources, and a Spanish textbook. Furthermore, World History I is taught in eighth grade at MEH, yet it is a high school credit class. So, something that the committee looked at was making sure that it was developmentally appropriate, which was a high priority for this committee. The committee believed that the Holt textbook, which was another textbook we looked at, was too dense and not middle school-friendly. We also looked at another book, the Glennco book, which sure just summarized a lot of different topics, but left out important facts, details that students could look back to. Therefore, the World History Committee strongly recommends the Prentice Hall textbook because we felt like it sort of had the best of both. It had outstanding supporting materials. It was laid out in an easy-to-read context and fully supported all the SOLs, all the details and facts needed for students to learn. Thank you for your time. Any questions?
Anyone? I guess not. Thanks very much. And thanks to your committee.
Good evening. I'm Jeannie Seabridge. And I think Rory summed a lot of it up already, so I'm not going to repeat some of the things that he already said. The process is the same at the high school as far as going through the textbook adoption. We have a committee and so on. We made sure that we followed the Virginia Department of Education guidelines. There are certain books that we can choose and certain ones we're not supposed to. So, we did follow those guidelines. The other thing we looked at was pretty much what Mr. Dipple said, that we wanted to make sure there was an online component. So, if the kids are at home and they don't want to carry the textbook home with them, they can go online and access the textbook that way as well. So, we have the hard copy, which there are five, by the way, so we do have a little bit more than the middle school does. We have five textbooks because there are three social studies courses that are SOL courses at the high school. We have World Civ, U.S. Government, and we have U.S. History. We also have the higher levels of AP and IB. So, those require different books. So, that's why we have the five that we're looking at. I do have them with me. If you really want to look at them, you're welcome to. We will also have them on display for a little while longer in the George Mason High School office if you care to stop by and take a look at them as well. So, if anybody doesn't have any questions, I'll pass on to the next person.
So, I have one question, really for both of you. This is my yearly, when textbooks are brought to us for approval question, which is about when we'll be moving away from those big, heavy, hardcover textbooks to eBooks you can read on a Kindle or an iPad, or, you know, something like that, that have in them the links to get to the places where the kids can do all of the multimedia things they need to do. When might that come?
That's a very good question. And we considered that. And one of the fears that the committee had was to make sure that the kids have access to technology and that they have a MacBook or an iPad that they can take home with them and use. And once we know with other departments, not just social studies, but once we know that that is going to be the case, we will probably move away from textbooks because most of the teachers and committee members felt too that carrying something around like this is ridiculous. We did have the eBook versions that were available as well. The concern there was it has to be downloaded onto the machine. It's not internet-based. So, you have to have that machine to put it on, then you can access it anywhere. The committee felt that that's the best thing, especially if you're playing sports and you're on the bus and you're on the way to a game, you don't have internet access. So, if they had their laptop or whatever, they could pull it up and they could do their work on their laptop. But right now, we figured the online version would be the best because we weren't sure what kind of access they'd have for next year.
So, it sounds like maybe we're only a year or two away from that?
Yes, definitely.
And the other piece is right now, the cost between getting the hardcover and getting just online is about $7 difference.
Yes.
You pay, let's say if the book is $80, you're going to pay $72 just to have the online anyway. So, we figured at this point, because we're still not completely comfortable, or the committee wasn't completely comfortable, we would go ahead and spend the $7 or $8 more to just have that security for this time. But yes, we're moving that way. That was the same question that Dr. Jones asked me when I presented the materials. And she said, "The school board's going to ask you." And I said, "Okay, I'll be ready."
And that's a great question. We definitely want to do that. And the vendors were great. They threw in a lot of free items, too. So, there was two companies that didn't have it as a bundle, and they threw in some of that for free. Like, so it really worked out well because we knew we needed it.
Yeah, we negotiated.
Yes, yes.
I know that. We tried.
I know that. Thank you very much. And thanks to your committee as well. We appreciate all that hard work.
I just had a question. I know there are certain subjects where things change quickly and others where things don't change as quickly. I almost went into teaching history. History does change. It's not static. But how, what is the refresh cycle for this type of text for World Civ? How often, how often do you think it's wise to update? And how long has it been since this last exercise?
Sure. To answer that question, for World History I, it was since 2003 was the textbook. So, the copies were actually falling apart. So, for the middle school, we did not decide to adopt for civics, which is taught in seventh grade, and US II, which is taught in sixth grade. Because of that, for civics, things are constantly changing. The teachers are providing a lot of supplementary materials on Schoology and other, in the classroom. And also, those were more recently adopted, I believe, 2006 and 2007.
And just one other question. It's interesting to see the Lexal scores for some of these textbooks. Some seem flatter and more consistent, and others seem to have pretty wide variations. Is that, does that reflect a committee design of these books, or was that intentional, or why the fluctuation?
Sure. For the World History textbook, it was just based on the unit. Certain units just had different, more complex vocabulary. So, when Dr. Harcharik, the reading specialist, the reading specialist, looked at different sections, we focused in on the ones that the teachers use primarily for the textbook as a, mostly in class. So, she just looked at those specific sections. And again, that's probably why the variation, based on the actual material.
Thank you.
And just for your information, the state has a seven-year cycle for their adoption, where they look at SOLs and they look at materials. And so, they look every seven year. So, and we're trying to line ourselves up so that we're adopting one year after they adopt, so that we are, you know, we have the most up-to-date materials. And so, that's one of the reasons why it's a little bit overdue because we didn't purchase the time when we should have. So, we just tried to really get on the cycle with the state. So, we look every five years for new materials and do a curriculum review.
And with respect to that, what's the duration of an electronic book license? I mean, is it-
Typically, six years.
Six years, okay.
And do they update it over the course of that, six years?
Yes.
See, this is why we do that.
Hang on, then on.
None, none, none. I'm sorry. I beat this dead horse every year. If this is the first time you've been beaten, you know, you're in good company with your colleagues. Any other questions about this? Alright, is there a motion to approve these wonderful textbooks for our children?
We need to do the language arts one, so.
With language arts next.
Is it? There's two, there's two motions here.
Oh, there are?
Yep.
Sorry.
Anybody want to make the first motion? It's a lengthy one.
Move me a little.
Prove that the school board approved the adoption of the following: Social Studies and Language Arts textbooks. Eighth grade World History I, World History Volume I, Virginia Edition, Ellison Essler, 2011, publisher Pearson Prentice Hall. U.S. History, The Americans, Reconstruction of the 21st Century, 2011, publisher Hoften Mifflin Harkett. Modern World History, Patterns of Interaction, Morden Beck et al., 2011, publisher Hoften Mifflin Harkett. U.S. Government, U.S. Government Principles and Practice, Fraga, 2011, publisher Hoften Mifflin Harkett. AP Government, Government in America, AP, 2013, publisher Pearson. IB, America's a People and a Nation, is that the 10th Edition, Norton, 2015, publisher Syngage Learning. And that- Oops.
Stop for now.
Second.
Thank you. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Alright, very good. Now, we can move on to the K5 Reading and Language Arts program. Okay.
And before Summer Manos and Shelley Skamar and Stephen Eric come up, I did want to say that we did focus K12, or we talked to K12 as far as what we needed to adopt or look at for language arts and for English for the high school. And the high school is looking more at eBooks, but it was more supplementary material. So, we will continue with that process. So, we really focused on K5, and I'm happy to say that we're excited about what we've chosen. And I'm going to turn it over to Summer, but I can't guarantee that I will be quiet the entire time.
Don't be quiet.
I'm excited. I'm a K5 girl, so.
We both are. Hi, thank you so much for having me tonight. As Lisa already mentioned, we are very excited and very proud to be coming to you this evening with this information. The literacy task force started gathering several years ago, really with the purpose to articulate what is our core language arts instruction? What do we know all of our students K5 receive as far as best practices, research-based instructional methods, strategies, direct instruction, and so on and so forth? And so, we really focused on vertical and horizontal alignment. And so, over the years, we've made some decisions about those practices. But really, this year, being able to focus on a materials adoption process has really empowered our group to kind of take our practices to the next step. So, we're very excited. We really wanted to start with a process that would be very strategic in nature and be very transparent and really involve all of our stakeholders in the schools. So, we brought in Dr. Heidi Anne Mesmer from Virginia Tech last spring, and her full summary is on board docs for you to review. But ultimately, we had her come in and collect really just an inventory of what are our elementary language arts practices? What do they look like? We had her conduct focus groups with all grade-level teams. We had her send out teacher surveys. We brought her back again, and she went and did observations. And so, she really put together a very thorough document for us that highlighted our strengths because we know we have many, but also really honed in and allowed us to target the areas that we know we needed to address with some materials moving forward. The three main goals of her work, again, were to describe our current curriculum and instructional practices, to analyze the strengths and needs, and really to give us some specific recommendations for moving forward with curriculum and instructional practices improvements, materials adoption, assessment, and PD. So, how we were going to then roll those things out moving forward. From her report, we got several recommendations. The first of which was to bring more structure to our curriculum and instructional practices without dismantling the great practices that were taking place in our classrooms. The other recommendation that she had was to identify a curriculum and instructional- a curriculum and instructional program that would include those key elements of literacy that were so essential, reading, writing, and word study. So really, those big three components. She also hit on the, the need for us to really look at our vertical and horizontal alignment and to make sure we were very purposeful with the planning. And then also to create a plan to support what we were going to do, how we were going to roll it out, and then support teachers in that process. So that was how we started this work. And then we brought together a team of teachers, specialists, administrators from throughout, from throughout our schools. And we held a kickoff meeting in November. And Lisa presented both the TJ and the Mount Daniel faculty. We brought everyone together with a very clear and focused plan for the purpose of this process, what we knew, our language arts curriculum and instructional, excuse me, instructional method was going to look like, and then what materials we would need moving forward to really match to that. So we used the, you can pipe in anytime, Lisa.
Yeah, you're doing well.
We, we used the Virginia Department of Education's resources to go from as a starting point. And we only looked at, at materials that were approved by the Department of Education. And the materials that really seemed like a good match for us were Benchmark Education by Benchmark Literacy and Journeys by Hoften Mifflin-Harkett. So we brought in both vendors. We had the vendors present to our teams. We had our teachers go back into the buildings and do pilots of certain materials. We went and did a site visit of a school in Fairfax County that was using Benchmark Literacy. And we had the opportunity to speak with their classroom teachers, their reading specialist, their administrator. And that was a really powerful experience, I think, for all of us. And so we really wanted to find materials that empowered our master teachers to build upon those great practices that they've been doing while providing us some consistency throughout our K-5 continuum, and then also provide more supports for our newer teachers. To provide them something that if they've never taught before, they can step foot in our classrooms and know what elementary language arts instruction looks like in Falls Church City. So we were really excited. And the product that we, the committee really felt did all of those things and was the best fit for us moving forward was Benchmark Literacy. So I'm going to ask Shelley Scamra, who's one of our teachers and was on our committee, to just give you some specifics from her perspective about what really spoke to her with Benchmark Literacy.
Thanks, Summer.
You're welcome.
Hello.
You're so proud of each other.
Yes. Excuse me. One of the things I got to do was, I got to pilot one of, like, I got to. I got to pilot one of the reading series, which was Benchmark Literacy. So for three weeks, I took the full unit and I taught it to my classroom, well, with 10 snow days in between. And so what, and the idea was, is that we were going to be able to figure out how teacher-friendly it was. And it's like Summer said, how easily adaptable the materials that we already do will fit into it. And these ladies know me, I'm a huge reading skeptic. I think I do it the best, and nobody does it better. And I was blown away by this material.
It's true. Yeah, she knows it's true. And so math, different story, different story math, but reading. And I was actually blown away by, I mean, I was almost upset that I hadn't thought about some of the ideas that they did. And so what we did start out
with was a whole unit, the first unit was on biographies. The Benchmark Literacy follows genres versus cute little stories cut up with the vocabulary handed to you first. And so because of that, it's a huge scope that they, that you can go under. And the, so when we started with biographies, the way that they taught biographies was basically to have one biography, a cute little passage, and then compare it with another one. And then they talked about the important things they should have. And I'm not doing it justice. You'd have to come to my classroom to see it. And, but the way they did it, the kids really grabbed on to it. It was a beautiful thing. The, so we went from that to actually write, there was a writing component where they could actually write about the person that they were doing. Not your typical little, you know, this, he was born here. But they wanted them to get the hook. Why is this person important? So they focused not only with doing biographies, but also focusing on main idea and details, which happens to be one of the things that we're really working on to bring up with some of the SOL scores. It's a very hard concept, but they actually managed to do it. The next thing we went on to was, I'll skip that one, it wasn't that big of a deal, was fluency, which the way that we've taught fluency, I've been a little shaky about. But what they've done is they start off talking about monologues, but they go right into a dialogue. And so they have a poster of what they have, where they have a dog lover versus cat lover. It's very concrete. And the children learn back and forth what a dialogue is. So then what we did is we went from there for, for that, for them to looking at different kinds of monologue or dialogues, and then looking at different kinds of reading materials and how they would actually read it. So if you were reading a riddle or a joke, you would read it fast, tongue twisters. So this whole thing, they got that down, which was really good. After we went through all that, then they had to go back and create a dialogue with each other. So they were in partners, which is something I'll show you up here, is that we actually, they had to write the dialogue, and then, this was my favorite part, they had to create a storyboard that would go with their dialogue. And so, let's see if I can find it, because it was a little tricky here. All right. So this is one by Elizabeth Creed. And she worked with another person, another person on the, another student. And they had the exact same dialogue. But yet, when they created these, they had to do them separately. They were not to see each other's. And the idea behind it was that way, they could see each other's, compare it, and then you can bring in the visual imaging strategy as well. So what she, what they did is they made these, and they, we put them on my Schoology page, which, if anybody's interested in that, I'll give you the access code, and you can go check that out. And so they can go on the Schoology right now, and they can click on this, and it'll show them a slideshow. We, we worked on this for two days. I thought it would be like, you know, an hour or two. I was wrong. So they did this. And then if you go back and forth, and, and they had to actually come up with a dialogue that was similar to the ones we talked about. So, because it has to be concrete for them. And they went in, and they were able to create their whole, their own comics. And I was like, very, you know, impressed with what they actually came out with, which I was surprised about. So, but the beauty of it all is this is all text, this is all from the benchmark, literacy benchmark. So it was a very, it was a very impressive thing all the way around. Let me find it. Oh. This is the Schoology website, or the Schoology page that I have. This is for my classroom. And then if you look down here, I was able to go, and it's called Storyboard That, embedded in there. And then they can go right in there, into their own account, which is protected, and they can continue to create more dialogues back and forth, which they were doing about 20 minutes ago. So I'm impressed with that.
That's great. Wow.
Any questions?
No wonder you're excited. This is really awesome.
Steve's been talking about the, the integrated. The storyboards. What?
I was just going to show you some of the positive or the benefits of Schoology. I didn't know if you wanted to finish up with the benchmarks.
We can, we can do that. And then, because you'd asked for us to highlight a little bit of technology in Schoology.
That's what we were going to look at. Yeah, he's going to show you that.
He'll show that. Yeah, let's finish the language arts, yeah.
Okay, sorry, guys. So, and one of the things I didn't mention is there is a huge technology component with Benchmark. So we get an online subscription, we get access to ebooks, and a lot of smart board lessons and other technology items with the Benchmark. And also, one of the things I didn't highlight is it includes differentiated texts, and it also includes a focus on nonfiction, which we know is a new push with the revised standards of learning. So we really want to make sure that our students are being explicitly taught how to read nonfiction, just as much as they're being taught fiction. So those were some of the components that really spoke to us, again, about the Benchmark. So any, any questions?
Anyone? Do you have questions?
Yeah, I guess I had one issue. Obviously, our brains had to come to reading. We weren't all born to read. And I know kids don't all read at the first grade level in first grade. And how much, these materials seem to have differentiation built into them. I guess, could you talk a little bit more about how that, it seems there are many pieces here. There's obviously the, the teachers are the most important. There's the Waterford, which seems to be really effective. And then this, how's, what's, what's the integration?
I'm glad you brought that up. Because one of the things that's most unique about this program is it focuses on differentiated texts and matching text to readers. So we know to expedite reading skills, we have to instruct students at their instructional level. And so Benchmark includes over 160 different texts that each classroom teacher will get, and they're on a variety of levels. So if I'm a third grade teacher, and I have students that are still reading at a first grade level, I can teach them content-wise, the same content, but I have access to a text on that level, just like I have access to text on a fifth grade level that's the same content. It looks very similar. But the leveled text libraries that each classroom teacher will get in this program are massive and was definitely a biggie for us, because that is exactly how we would address differentiated instruction with, with reading.
And then does that dovetail then with the Star Reading in terms of, wouldn't a Star Reading kick into all this and that?
Well, the Star Reading is our assessment tool.
Right.
Would give teachers the ability to kind of gauge, again, that level and how to match text readers, and then to monitor their growth as they continue to grow as a reader. So that data, that sort of data would inform their instruction.
Great. Any other questions? All right, why don't we, yeah, sure.
I wonder how this relates to our ESOL students and, and what the, what the response of their teachers happened to be. Was it also very enthusiastic?
Shelley has a sample of the differentiated texts that we're talking about. Yes, we had an ESOL teacher. The ESOL cert was as part of this committee. And then we also brought in another ESOL teacher from Mount Daniel to sit on the committee, because our ESOL cert does teach at the middle school. So we wanted that elementary perspective. And she was also very impressed with these materials. Again, a lot of it goes back to matching text to readers. So ensuring that even our English language learners, if they're reading below grade level, they have access to text at their instructional level, so that we can continue to expedite their literacy growth and development. And again, one of the things about Benchmark that I thought was really unique and will be helpful to us is the fact that it still incorporates a lot of rigor, even within the differentiation, which is essential for our, our kids in our classrooms today. Do you want to show them the leveled?
Yeah, one of the, this, this is, I just brought set one, which, I'll show you just two examples. This is Harriet Tubman and the Underground Railroad, and this goes with the fluency component. And in this is, it's, it's written on four, three different levels. So you've got an easier reader, a harder reader, and then the advanced reader. But the way that they did this is that the parts in here, it's the exact same book, but the parts are designated for different levels of readers. So they're all reading the same, but you might have an advanced reader who is able to read a more in-depth part. And then your lower readers will be able to also be a part of it. But the words, the frequent, the high-frequency words will be a little more in, they'll be a little more visible. They'll have more time to do, to practice those words. So this is one of the, one of the ways they do it. With the biography unit, we did, and this was really fun trying to figure this all out, by the way. This is the George Washington, Abraham Lincoln, okay? But this came also in two or three, I think it's three different levels. So when we got the books, we're kind of going through them, and we're like, this is good, okay. And then you look at another book, you're like, wait a minute. And what they've done is they've done them on the DRA levels. So you've got a DRA 28, 34, 38. Yeah. And so that's, that's how they differentiate it. And the idea behind it is, is that every kid gets this book, but it looks exactly the same. The pictures are identical. The content is exactly the same, except it's written at a lower comprehension level for some and then higher for others. And so the, and then with each book, there is an ESOL component that goes with it, that really focuses on, yeah, focuses on the vocabulary. It does a really good job of giving them concrete ways to grasp the vocabulary and then go into the comprehension. Because that's the big thing, is that ESOL kids have to work on that comprehension.
That prior knowledge.
Yeah. And it lines up with the SOLs beautifully. The other thing is, Summer was saying, is it does an integrated part. So each unit has two math books that go with it. One was fractions, this is probability, the solar system, gold, which talks about Molly, and then.
Perfect for third grade.
Perfect for third grade. And what was the other one we do? Oh, ancient Greece. Forgot them, yeah.
Those ancient civilizations.
Those ZIBs, you gotta, you know, you can't live without them. So that's just a little idea of how it works. And there's no, I'm, I'm sorry, you too. There's no thick textbook. No, there is no textbook. I'm just, I'm bad. It's all differentiated targets. It's all, all different data texts. Which is the other thing, you know, because, yeah, sorry. That, there, that's great what they were doing over here, though.
Got it.
Any other questions for us about?
Could I just ask one more question? It, it strikes me that, obviously, we're all old-fashioned and didn't have any of this stuff back in the day. It strikes me that one of, there have to be copyright reasons why nonfiction is driving this, because you can't get The Trumpet of the Swan written in six, three or four different levels. Is that, I mean, are we, are we, or is that the case? Am I wrong? Are they taking some, some fiction and getting rights to do that?
There's just as much different, I believe it's, I don't know the exact percentage of fiction and nonfiction texts, but it's pretty close. Is it 60/40?
I think it's 60/40.
I think it's 60/40. And that's a shift that's coming down from the Virginia Department of Education, which is just teaching students how to digest and really comprehend nonfiction text because of the cross-curricular exposure and the fact that we have students that have to really read and digest that nonfiction text for the rest of their lives. And so I'm not, I'm not sure if it's because of the leveling of certain novels or not. But, but what?
I don't think they can level certain novels.
So that would probably be a big part of it.
There's just books that they have to wait until they're older grade, and then we just guide them as we can.
And again, that, there's just so much out right now about really just matching text to readers and being able to put, you know, appropriate text at their reading level in their hands. So.
And I'd just like to close with the next step, is we're pulling together a cadre for every grade level or for K-5 to begin to do the work on exactly what will happen in our classrooms, the length of our language arts block, exactly what should be happening during the language arts block, as well as professional development. We've already, once, once you approve it, I will solidify with the company for a professional development date to come out and work with our teachers, because we, we think that professional development ongoing all year is what we need to do. We can't just give the materials and then not provide the, the professional development to our staff. So that's something that we're committed to for next year as well.
Great.
Yeah.
Thank you, Ms. Hy.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so what we're going to do is we're going to see if we can approve these materials, and then we're going to learn a little bit about Schoology. So, is there a motion to approve these materials? It's the last couple lines of the. Okay.
Madam Chair, I move that the school board approve the adoption of the following instructional materials, K-5 Reading and Language Arts Benchmark Literacy Program, Tammy Jones and Carrie Smith, 2010, publisher Benchmark Education.
Thank you very much for the second Ms. Word. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? All right, very good. Thanks for your hard work on that, and Ms. Hy, and you as well. That's really exciting stuff. I can understand why you're excited about it tonight. That's great. I've never seen people so jacked up before. I have to say, I've sat on a number of these presentations where we were adopting textbooks. I've never seen people so excited in my life. I think it's awesome. It's so great. It's just great. It's wonderful. Okay, now we're going to learn a little bit about Schoology.
The teachers at TJ, and I'm sure all the teachers at Falls Church, just want to thank the school board and Dr. Jones for bringing us such wonderful technology into our classrooms and giving us the accessibility to use the things that we learn about as we read online and research the best practices, and we go to professional development. This past, maybe it was two weeks ago or last week, I went to Ag Camp in Arlington and just saw the wonderful things that teachers are doing. And to know that we're able to do that here in Falls Church, I just wanted to thank you guys very much. But I'm sure also you're curious what we are doing with some of the things with, that you're giving us. And Schoology has been a new program for us this year, a new, it's a web-based program or website, where we're able to continue dialogue with our students and with our families outside of the classroom. We're able to post questions that they can go home, and they can discuss with their families. They can post or reply back to us throughout the evening. You can see some of these posts have come in even after school. I think one that was up here earlier was at, from like 417 or a little bit after school that out today. So students are going home, and they are accessing these things. And we do get great feedback from families, that they appreciate the fact that they're able to see really what kids are doing, and they're also able to really participate in what they're doing. So I just wanted to walk you through a couple of the pieces to Schoology and some of the things that we find that are very useful. I am on Ms. Scamra's Schoology account, so all these wonderful things. I am on Ms. Gomra's Schoology account, so all these wonderful things are, you know, really put together by her hard work, but they're things that our team shares. We've learned how to put things on here and then not just share them by word of mouth, but actually share them. So I can link them to my account, she can link them to her account, we can go across grade levels using Google Drive, which isn't necessarily Schoology, but it is an app that you can access through Schoology. I'll just kind of show you, if I go up here to Materials, you go to Resources, and there's apps, and you can, you can access your Google Drive right through Schoology. And my, my third grade students have created a cartoon Hall of Fame where they've, they've nominated some of their favorite cartoons in different categories, and they've shared them with fourth graders in Mr. Carey's class, and they are editing them on Google Drive and sending them back to us. So eventually, we hope to use the forums to, to actually vote and put together our, our Hall of Fame. And it really was very simple, just, it was, we just had to lead the students to it, and it spread, spread like fire, really. When you get onto Schoology, you'll see there's courses at the top, and we share some of the courses with each other. There's a digital learning team for SCCPS. Ms. Gomra has hers right here, so her kids will log in. If you're not in any of the courses, if you're just in the home, you'll see really what everybody in the school is doing. So here you'll see activity not just for Ms. Gomra, but I think if I scroll down, you'll see Mr. Fitzpatrick, Ryan, Ryan O'Rourke, I'm not sure who that, oh, another Schoology educator. So you see educators from even outside of SCCPS. But we really, we have the kids go right to their course or right into our classroom where we've linked specific things for them. And so here's Ms. Gomra's courses. And within that, you see that you have the class calendar here on the side. You can see that the ice cream party's coming up and spring break. We have a couple of class birthdays coming up. Lulu's gonna be leaving us, so that's, you know, kind of sad for the class. But it really, it not only helps us, it helps the students and it helps the families to know, you know, not just when the test is, but when are students coming and going and what's going on, you know, really daily in the, in the classroom. So we have our calendar, and then the students can post right here in the middle, so they can post questions to each other. But if they really want to get more in-depth, they can go into the materials and there is a discuss, there is a, an area to have discussions. I'd have to scroll down more. Oh, sorry, it's way down here. There we go. Discussions, and that's an area where students can really focus on a certain topic, because the posts do run very quickly and they're updated, and a lot of them are just, you know, they're up there for a day or so and then they get, kind of get buried, much like a Facebook, I would assume. But here, you can actually put real conversations for students could keep ongoing and, and keep track of day after day. So here's some famous quotes from famous people. You can see some of her different topics, new reading series, the students have discussed this, Schoology, Rulegies, so Schoology rules, there's things to do's and the don'ts. And really, it all leads up to some of the awesome things that you saw here this afternoon from the, the technology team that came in with the robot. It starts in the younger grades, just learning how to access such technology, learning how to work as a team together, not always in the same room with each other. So Schoology brings that to us. They also have in here materials, and if, I'll click on actually just the big materials, you'll see reading, math, science, social studies. We can link things into different topic areas. And underneath the materials, this is where Ms. Gomra's handed out her digital storyboard assignment for the students to access and share. So when JR Marshall clicks, click on it, this one will be blocked, but you can, you saw it earlier in the website here, where, where this is, this is really their project that they worked on, they worked on together, and they were able to share it right here. Oh, it popped up this time. I don't know why. Last time it was blocked. But there it is, right inside of Schoology, and students can, can share it. Other materials that are on there are really any websites that we use. I use a website called Simbleloo where, which kind of makes each of my websites or each of my bookmarks into a tile, and I've linked that right into my Schoology and it embeds right there. And whenever I go to a new unit, I just update my websites for that unit. So right now, we're in soils, so all my soil units are on the sci, I call it Science Lou, so they go to, into School, I'm sorry, yeah, they go into Schoology, and then I have my Science Lou and my History Lou. They all play off of the Simbleloo website, but they're all embedded right there, and it's easily accessible. Also underneath the, the materials isn't just a link to websites, but there are assignments. You can give the students assignments and they can access them and they can turn them back in. So here's every night homework, free write and geometry, what can you make out of a triangle? So these are just some of the recent assignments in the past week from Ms. Gomra's class. Not only assignments, though, students can access tests and quizzes. I believe Ms. Gomra has some, some really cool ones. You can see a measurement test that she created. How can you preview? Oh, questions? There we go. So measuring distance by inch, foot, yard, and mile is called, and then it was multiple choice, and the students... What's that? Preview. Begin tester quiz. There we go. These are things are called, and then there's multiple choice. I believe some of them have pictures embedded in them. So as we learn more and more about Schoology, we learn better ways to use it, better ways to access it. Certainly, we're learning every single day. Every time I attend a digital learning session from Mr. Knight or Mr. Lands, we learn something new every time, even if it's something I feel like, oh, I've, I've attended this before, I'm familiar with this, I still go home with something new in my toolbox. I did show you the Google Drive that, that's linked to it. Another thing, that's just kind of fun, but it's, it encourages the kids, is there's an album on here, so you can put in class pictures. So I think we had pictures from the Tiger Hippo Games linked to it. Leave page. There we go. And the students are able to make comments on the, on the, the pictures. I think we have a couple of the teachers working on report cards, and this, kind of the kids had a fun time, just really, you know, going through there and having fun with their learning and explaining their, their enthusiasm and what they're doing with their day. And then they posted some comments for you guys today, just as far as what they really like about Schoology. So Ms. Gomra wrote to her students, "I'm talking with the school board tonight. They are really interested in how we are using Schoology in writing dialogues. What should I tell them about what we are doing in our classroom? They would love to hear from you, not, and not so much from me. Share your most honest thoughts." And I won't read all of them, as you can see, there's 23 comments, but they range in all variety. Here, Isabella said, "I like Schoology because it's, it's like you're at school, but you're at home. You're able to access things." Courtney says, "You can put discussions in, on the post, and you can reply," and Ms. Gomra, and even, to Ms. Gomra, and you can even put your homework on it. Students who are absent from school who need to know what happened that day, or where spelling words are, or how to access something, they can access it right there. Do you guys have any questions or anything we'd like to see from Schoology or comments?
Any one? Anybody? Justin's going unless there's somebody else. All right.
So, so here's a question. Some, one of these kids, 20 years ago, their kid says, "Well, what was it like in Ms. Gomra's class?" And she says, "Well, let me show you the storyboard." What, what happens to this stuff? How long is it there? Where does it go? Who gets it?
If you look up there, there's a little crown by the administrator's name. That means I'm the queen. So it stays up there until I decide to take it down. Or Schoology shuts down, or we decide not to do it anymore.
To, to go along with that, maybe just a quick plug that I know is a concern for some of the teachers, not, not so much a concern, but, you know, we put a lot of time and a lot of effort into these things, and it, for us to have the buy-in to continue to want to put in the time and the effort, we appreciate the fact that you guys allow us to use this and access this. And, you know, nothing takes us further than knowing that it's gonna be here next year, and that it's gonna be here the year after that, and that the kids can access it. I know just myself personally, that's, that's one thing that I think about as I spend my weekends and my nights do, using this, is, you know, is this going to go by the wayside? So with that said, I just want to say thank you.
All right, thank you.
Question.
Yes.
Was there another system before Schoology?
That, that's exactly where my comments, in a way, come from it a little bit, is things do change very, very quickly.
And so to Justin's point, where did that stuff go?
Went away.
Great question. I, I, I personally use, I have an old website that I created, and even today, I was using it. Dr. Jones came in and observed, and we were accessing student newspapers. We have the Washington Post for kids and Time for Kids and Classic News, and I have linked Sports Illustrated for kids as well, to my old website. And I've linked it to Schoology. I can, I'll log out of Ms. Gomra's and show you mine. But I know that a lot of teachers put in effort to teach her net last year, her teacher web. And so I think Schoology's great, and it's really working, and I think a lot of teachers would love to see it stick around. I don't know if anybody has a...
And I just want to, you know, give the commitment that we, we are committed to Schoology, and with the process, we had a system that a lot of the teachers really liked. It was heavily used at the high school, called Angel. Angel went away, and it kind of threw everybody for a twirl, I think. What we implemented was not working. And so in 2011, 12, I'm trying to think what year, that'd be two years ago, we knew the system wasn't working. So we had teachers who were just trying to find whatever they could, because they wanted to be progressive with their kids. And so in 1112, we, we did a pilot at the high school of Schoology and a couple of other ones as well. And so it, this was really chosen by our teachers. And Schoology, we made a commitment to it. We opened it to also purchase it for middle school if they wanted it. The very first year, middle school wanted it. So it's, hasn't been something that's been forced all the way down, and that's when you know it's really working. This year, we opened it and said, "If you want us to buy it at TJ, we will buy it for you." We had, we actually bought them teacher web to get them started on something last year. And the teachers have self-selected to say, "No, we love what Schoology's offering." And now, you see, it's heavily used all the way through second grade, and we're very committed to Schoology, to the fact that even the Schoology folks know us. We had an email today where Schoology is actually recommending, there's some, some people here from New Zealand that are, that are touring the United States, and they're gonna visit the school system to see how we're using Schoology, because we're using it all the way through the system. The interesting thing is, you know, some of our high school kids, and they're probably still trying to wrap their head around Schoology every once in a while, compared to how our second and third graders are. Yeah. Yeah. I mean, I, when I was in the TJ classrooms today, and it's just amazing to see, just, you know, how the kids converse, and it's just so easy for them. So really, in our middle school and high school, it's gonna be exciting to watch these kids start to move up, and, and what a breath of fresh air for middle school and high school teachers, because they're not gonna be training. The kids are gonna come in having all of these digital skills, and it's awesome.
So as a follow-up question, I, I guess this is more for, for us and less for them, but is there, are there privacy concerns here with the content?
No, that, that's one of the reasons, oh. That's one of the reasons we needed an LMS. We needed an LMS that we purchased that has all those protections built in, where you know it's on a secured server, so kids are logging in, things are protected. We did not want our kids out just, or, you know, 20 different teachers on 20 different websites, the school division doesn't know where they are, we can't monitor it. We have admin rights at the division level. I could go in and see any, anything that I wanted on Schoology, and everything is very safe and secure, and you pay for that. And so, I mean, that's, that's part of it.
Tony, can I add one thing real quick? With the Schoology, when we create the classrooms, I, and the, myself, the kids, and their parents are the only ones who can get into the, to our class unless I let somebody else in. So with, like with Steve or Dawn England, when we share things across, then I can let them in, and then we can cross the, our classes over. But there has to be an access code that, for you to get into. And even the parents have, like, they have to sign on and do it, so it's a very secure site. But, but going back to Justin's question about how long will it last, each year that we get a new class, we will establish another member's classroom, which will allow the, just those kids in that class. So the kids that I have this year will not be able to go and access the class that I have next year. And so that's, I think that's one thing why it is a secure site, and we do feel comfortable using it.
And I, I know we've had lots of discussions on the tech committee, tech advisory, that one of the things we have to be training our kids to do, that's why housing their, their things in the cloud or even on a flash drive, but is if our kids leave our high schools, they don't want to lose all their content. In the old days, they would have lost it all when it was just stuck on our server. So we're really training kids in that way.
So, do we, I may ask Shelley, can you access, like, from several years back, say a student wanted to look at what they did two years ago? Can they still access that information, or does that fall?
They can, they, as far as I know, they can access it.
Do you know how far into the future they can access it?
I have no idea. But I know at this point, they can access it. And I know, well, I know that at the, with my two at the high school, they can go back and access classes they've had in the last couple of years. But they, as long as they ha, as long as they're logged in as a member, then they can get in. The other thing that Schoology also allows us to do is, because we have the crown, is that when we see that a student, and we've had one or two of those, is not using it appropriately, we can go right in and unenroll them, which means you don't get to be a part of this until you learn how. And then we work with that student to get them back in. So I've had three unenrolled, three put back in, two unenrolled again. Now, there's just one unenrolled, but we're, we're hopeful. He just has to quit writing those potty words on it. But, so if...
Did he spell it?
No. No, if you spell, I mean, at least spell it right. Anyway, so, editing, but, so that's also the thing we can do. So we've got complete control of this. They can't control it. It's just them. We've worked a lot on the safety about logging off, that anytime they're gone from Schoology, they have to log off every time and log back in, because then somebody else, if you don't log off, well, then somebody else can go into your account and then write, you know, a potty word on it, and then that shows up. Yes, that did happen, by the way. So...
It, it doesn't log off, like, after a certain amount of time?
No, you have to go in and log it off.
Okay.
Which is what we, that's one of the things, there, it's ingrained in them. Log off, log, I mean, they're really kind of sick of hearing me say it. Log off, log off, log off. So before they leave, and they have, in, in the classroom with my group, they have monitors. So they have to watch each other to make sure that they're logged off, and that way, we don't have the issues. At home, I, you know, if their computers at home would be different, they can't get into it. But at school, because of the, the kids that are around each other, we just want to make sure that they're safe with that.
Thanks. Any other questions? All right, thanks, y'all.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. What a diverse agenda we have this evening.
Oh, my goodness. That's fun.
The next item on our agenda is the approval of a transfer from the FY14 contingency fund. Dr. Jones?
And this is just what the school board decided to do by using the $100,000 of the current year to purchase materials, furnitures, and supplies for the classrooms. And so we're just, we need your approval, because it is contingency.
Anybody have a question about this? I think we discussed it all during budget, so is there a motion?
Would you jump in? I recommend that the... Recommend that the Falls Church City Public Schools approve a transfer, school board Recommend that the Falls Church City Public Schools approve a transfer, school board approve a transfer of the funds in the amount of $100,000 from its FY14 contingency reserve to purchase classroom materials, furniture, and supplies.
Thank you, Mr. Rankuma. Is there a second for that motion? Thank you. All in favor, please say aye. Aye, and any opposed? All right, very good. Dr. Jones, please go make it happen so our kids will have desks.
Absolutely, I'm on it right now. For the city water proceed, this was just to kind of update you. I actually thought they weren't going to be discussing it at all. And then it kind of appeared on their agenda last night. And so I wanted to be sure that the attachments are on here for you. This, what, the retirement board was present for city council meeting last night and put forward a proposal that they are pondering. At the end of the comments, it did seem as though they just kind of took a straw poll. It wasn't official, it was a work session, encouraging the retirement board to bring back a more detailed plan. They are looking very seriously at utilizing, and as of last night, what was presented, it would be 11 million towards creating an endowment within the retirement fund. And they want to be sure that that's how it's communicated, is that it's an endowment. When those proceeds, 11 million would go into that fund. It would generate, according to what the actuaries were saying last night, $800,000 would be the average per year that that money would generate. That money would then be used to fund CIP-only projects. And the intent would be not to utilize all 800,000 every year, but to use a portion of that on a project. And then a portion of that would then go into a reserve for CIP. So just keeping you up to date, watching that closely because some of the school board had said, what are they planning to do with the water money? They still have not given the actual total of the complete fund and what that number will be. But again, I just, I've added these documents on here for you. And I did check today and Mr. Shields said he believes that, you know, by June 30th, they were trying to make a decision on this. So keep watching it and keep updating as things come forward.
The reason I asked Dr. Jones to put this on the agenda is that we did have a conversation a month or so ago about this topic and whether the board should take a position on the use of these proceeds. So I wanted her to give you an update. We do have this as a work session item on our April 22 work session, which is our next work session, to talk about whether we think we should take a position or whether we shouldn't, so. All righty. The next item on the agenda is the George Mason Maryland Henderson Joint Process and Planning Committee update. Were you planning to do that, Dr. Jones? Or would you want me to do it? Or shall we have Mr. Lawrence do it? All right, I'll give a quick update for the community. First, for those in the community who aren't familiar with this group, this is a group comprised of two school board members, two city council members, a member from the planning commission, and one from the economic development authority. The purpose of the group is to collectively create a process for moving forward to determine how to, whether to develop any of the land up at George Mason and how to and what to do to get the high school that we so desperately need, including a number of details about the high school itself, as well as a funding plan and a financing plan. This group was formed earlier this year. We've been meeting most Thursday mornings at 7:30 here in City Hall. We've had a number of folks come and talk to us to give us their, benefit of their expertise, either in school buildings or funding and financing or development. The group will continue its work for, I think, another short amount of time before we come up with what will be a high-level kind of conceptual process, big categories of things we should be doing and in what order and with relative timing to them. These are open meetings, the community is invited. If you want to attend, they're posted here in City Hall, they're posted on our website and also elsewhere that all our school things are posted. The minutes for those meetings are available on the city website, also on the school board website. So if you want more information about this particular group, you can find it. The purpose this evening was just to let folks know that since the water referendum passed, we are moving forward to try to sort through this. It's going to be a complex project and it's going to take a little bit of time. But we're moving as quickly as we can while still trying to pay attention to making sure we're doing the right things. Questions? All right. And we do have one meeting tomorrow, this Thursday at 7:30 a.m., so feel free to join us. All right. The next thing, student liaisons and advisory board committees. Dr. Jones?
This is just a question the school board had asked early on. And so we're looking at, and I had Marty go ahead and pull for us. These are those formal committees that we approve each year. The ESAL committee, Gifted and Talented, already have active students. We are looking and working closely with, for BI extended daycare. The difficulty about BI is when it does meet, it's, you know, early in the morning. So that poses a little bit of a challenge. Extended daycare tends to be quite late at night. But again, we're looking at that. In the technology, we actually have students coming and our students have been very involved. And our students are coming to our next meeting, some high school students. But getting some students actually active on that committee would be great going forward next year. So just to let you know that we are looking at all of those. Probably the only committee where we have a little bit of hesitation is the family life. And that's just because sometimes some of the topics that you really need to talk about, sometimes have more of an adult focus deciding what is best for children. And even though some of them could be in high school, just giving that committee the flexibility to speak openly about topics. But we're exploring all of those and getting more student reps on our committees.
All right. And our student rep, maybe Curtin is engaged with that, not just with decisions about who and when we're, but also she and Dr. Jones and Mr. Bird will figure out the process for finding and getting the right kids to us. And so they're all on top of that. So I think that's terrific, great. The next is approval of 2014-15 staff calendar. Dr. Jones, what is the staff calendar?
The staff calendar, as you remember, when we brought the school calendar to you, it had just the student days so that our families could start planning vacations and do all of that. We asked for a little bit more time to work with our staff. We held, had a big committee meeting, really looked at what were the options for adding our professional days to the calendar. From there, we narrowed it down to, I think it was four options. Those four options went out to the entire school division so everybody could vote and have a voice. And it was pretty much unanimous in what they wanted. They wanted to add the days on August 21st and 22nd. And then they added the extra day in June. So we get that little bit of training before school, which we're excited about. But we're also getting that day at the end, which I know Mr. Sharp referenced after he had sat through that meeting, coming back and really analyzing the school year at the end and looking at the curriculum and how things worked and what we need to do to go forward. So again, the blues and the greens, and the staff know this, we're still working on exactly what's blue and what's green. That means a division day or a site day. And we're working actually on that tomorrow with all the leadership team. The number of days will not change. We'll have 10 green and four blue. We just want to make sure they're in the right place based on also, like Lisa talked about literacy training. We now have our literacy person booked for, I believe it's the 27th, yeah, August 27th. So we know that that's going to need to be a division day and be blue. And right now, it's green. So that's, we're excited about having our staff calendar. So now our division calendar is set.
All right, very good. Is there a motion to approve this calendar?
Madam Chair, I move that the school board approve the 2014-2015 Falls Church City Public School staff calendar as presented.
Thank you, Mr. Castillo. Is there a second? All right, very good. All in favor, please say aye. Aye, are there any opposed? All right. And Dr. Jones and Ms. Hi, I want to recognize and thank you for the hard work you did with all of your staff to get some consensus on this and get everybody happy with what we're doing because I think that's important. So thanks for that. All right. Next, we have a crucial item on our agenda, which is the approval of a mascot for the new Jesse Thackeray preschool.
And we're so excited. This is so fun. And I actually brought some pictures just because it makes it more fun. And we really, we've been so excited around our office today about this. Now, this is not necessarily the exact graphic. She will morph and change, I'm sure. And I, you know, and this kind of has a fun little story behind it, which always makes it exciting as well. Because the pre-K team, for whatever reason, fell in love and said, we should really, this should be Jesse Giraffe. And that was very early on. And so whenever we put out the call for the mascot, it was really fun to see giraffes and pandas and owls and bugs and all kinds of things come in. But overwhelmingly, and I think the pre-K team may have been out, you know, generating community energy, but the giraffe overwhelmingly beat the panda bears teddy bears. But the story that was really, and I still don't know because it was anonymous on who, you know, who was recommending mascot names. But somebody shared in their nomination of giraffe, they said, you know, we think a giraffe would be wonderful because Jesse's middle name was Gertrude. She never liked to be called Gertrude. And it was a little bit of a family funny that she loved to be called Gertie, that she liked Gertie, didn't like Gertrude. And she also loved giraffes. Could you think about Gertie Giraffe? And so it just so happened that the pre-K team also, you know, had loved a giraffe. And so I reached out to the family, to Keith and Sue Thackeray, to say, is this story really true? And they said, yes, it is. And then Keith shared that his, I think it was his daughter, actually called Jesse's car Gertie. So it kind of has a little history to it as well. So Gertie Giraffe is what the ASAC team is recommending after community input. We're so excited about it. And our littlest people, I think I'm more excited just to watch Gertie race at the football game. Because she's going to be so tall with her big, long neck. And we even found, John Brett found the costume online, so we know there are giraffe costumes. And if we can get it in place for Memorial Day, Gertie is, we'll have her out. So if we can make that happen. But that's our recommendation and we are just so excited about Gertie Giraffe.
All right. I'm glad to hear that we've identified the costume because otherwise I would have to move not to approve this thing tonight if we didn't have all of our details. Any thoughts or questions about this particular item on the agenda? Mr. Sharp, do you have something you'd like to say?
Thanks for the really detailed research on this. It's really, really, really nice. I just wonder, is the costume intended for one person or two?
That was a discussion item because we thought having those two kind of horse kind of things are hard. And we found a costume that's one person.
Sweet.
Since it's only one person, I'd get both answers.
Yeah, that person has to be able to hold their arms up like this for a long time.
If I get a chance to wear this costume, you have to come with the cat in the hat costume.
All right. Anything else before we move to approve this? Would anyone like to make a motion to approve this?
Madam Chairman, I move that the Falls Church City Public School Board approve Gertie Giraffe as the mascot for Jesse Thackeray preschool.
Thank you. Is there a second? Thank you. All in favor, please say aye. Aye, any opposed? All right, very good. We have a new mascot to join our zoo of other mascots. That's great. That's very cute.
You know what I just realized? This will be a perfect way to teach the preschoolers the difference between the hard G and the soft G.
There you go. And thanks for that. I'm glad that's been worked out, too. Just amazing. Okay. That was really fun. The next thing, who says it's dull to be in governance at the local level? Next is a construction update. Dr. Jones?
It should be quicker tonight. We're full steam ahead. Cherry is on target and everything is progressing well there. I'm going to head over this week and do another walkthrough. It's pretty much lots of walls knocked out and just looks all clean and fresh right now. At Mount Daniel, we finished our, at 5:30 this evening, we convened to narrow down the proposals to three proposals. We feel very, very confident about those three and they'll be officially notified within the next week. And we will be coming back to the school board very quickly with the detailed RFP that then goes to those three finalists to make sure that the RFP meets exactly to the letter of what we want it to. So very excited about that. And that's all because you've already spoken to GM, MEH.
Yeah, I would add one thing, which is that Dr. Jones will be bringing our recommended shortlist to this group at our work session on April 22nd for our approval. So that's something to look forward to.
Just one quick question about Cherry Street. Is it, is it? I'm sorry, excuse me, about Jesse Thackeray School. The timeline and the beginning of the school year?
Right. And I think at the last meeting, I addressed this, just to make sure people know that we're still expecting to open on time. What we don't have is the guarantee from HESS anymore is what we lost in that time loss. So let's say we have huge storms this summer and another deratio, we can't hold HESS accountable if they miss the deadline. And the deadline that we can't hold them accountable to is October 1st. However, right now, we are on target to open on time as long as we don't have any disaster this summer.
Thank you. Good question. And good response. Appreciate that. Yes, Mr. Sharp?
Before we leave this item, at the previous meeting, I asked about whether we might have a celebration for the completion of TJ and all the punch lists and all those items. And I think May 3rd is the PTA's festival for the spring. Again, I wouldn't want to definitely suggest that that's a day, but without, you know, discussing it with them. But just that's a day that's kind of set aside for a large group to be there and for a kind of spring celebration in any case. And perhaps that's a good way to coordinate. But again, I would just ask if we might explore with the staff and some of the PTA leaders there, what's a good time to do this? And really have a closure with the project at TJ.
All right. Thanks for reminding us about that, Karen. Appreciate that. The next thing on our agenda is future agenda items. If there are things that members of the board have been wanting the board to take up or discuss that they haven't seen on an agenda or don't know is somehow in our workflow for the next few months. Anybody have any things that they'd like to bring up? Yes, Mr. Rankuma?
I'm sure these are not, I don't know if they're pressing issues, but I'd like to learn more about it. I'm not sure if this is the forum or have a one-on-one with the soup or maybe Lisa. Two things, STEM, how it's run and ESAL, how that, you know, especially with how much money was cut off before the budget came in. And sort of like to get a little better understanding of it. But that's.
Okay.
Those are the two, like, my two issues.
That's great.
So I'd like to learn more about.
Yeah, so my question to the board would be, are there other members who would like for us to have a work session? For example, to talk about those things? Or if not, if everyone else kind of feels like they know what's going on, then I'll ask the superintendent to work with Mr. Rankuma one-on-one. Are there folks interested?
The STEM area, I would have a definite interest in learning a little bit more about that.
Okay. Sounds like there's enough interest to put this on a work session agenda. Yeah. Great. Anyone else have something? Mr. Sharp, I thought I saw you reaching for your button.
The calendars, full-day calendars have been pretty well set. And I wondered about the early outs, if those have been identified completely and what process might be ahead of us for that determination.
Yeah, that's part of what we talk about tomorrow. But I don't anticipate any change next year because we made the adjustment this year, which means if we're out on a Monday or a Friday, we don't have early release, which is what we did this year. So we're not anticipating any changes there next year from what we saw this year.
All right. Very good. All right. Not seeing anything else? Yes, Ms. Ward?
I'm not sure the protocol here, maybe y'all can straighten me out. With this legislative job I have, I didn't know if that, I sent an email out today. I don't know how many of you had a chance to read it. Is that something that needs to be on the agenda for discussion at a work session? Or is that something we just handle outside of the meetings?
It kind of depends on the time of year and the timeliness of it. We will generally, in the fall of the year, we'll put together a legislative package. That's going to have a formal discussion and approval and adoption. And it goes down to Richmond. On the interim basis, if there are things that we think we need to have a discussion about speaking out on it, it can come on an agenda at this meeting, it can come on an agenda at a work session for us to decide if we want to take a position or if we don't, and what it's going to be. And then we kind of press on from there. So what's the timeliness on this particular? Well, what's the issue and what's the timeliness?
Well, the issue is the state budget, but it's not really pressing because that's all in a holding pattern right now.
Okay, so maybe on the April 22 work session agenda, we can set aside a few minutes to take this up?
Sure. And I can, you know, find some more information out. What I know, you all know through that email, that's all I know at this point. But I'll see what else I can glean from my contacts and try and give you some more information.
That's great. And in the interim, it sounds like everybody has something for Margaret in their inbox. If you have questions or concerns or issues or whatever, just respond to her and she'll pull that stuff together. Great.
Great, thank you.
Thank you. Yes, Mr. Lawrence?
Will Lila be coming and briefing us? She's done it in the past after the session's over. I didn't know if that was a regular thing or?
She wasn't counting on it this year, but we can have her.
Okay. No, no, if she wasn't counting on it, we can deal with it. I was just curious.
Yeah. I don't think we have her planning to come this year. I think it's been a little bit quieter session with the exception of SOL tests.
I'm meeting her for lunch tomorrow. I could ask her.
I don't know that she needs to. I'm sure she would be happy to, but I don't know that she needs to. All right. The next item on the agenda is the superintendent's report.
And I really don't feel like I have to say a whole lot tonight because the teachers talk so much and you saw their excitement, you know? And it's really nice actually to not just have more program or, you know, really getting to see how teaching and learning is transforming. I was actually out in TJ today and it's just so fun to walk around and see all the classrooms. Just a couple of highlights of some things that are happening. We are hosting, and the teachers actually referenced it tonight, a Google summit in August. And that's a really big deal for us. Google does summits all around the world and we will expect about 500 people in attendance. It's Google-certified trainers that come from all over the place. And a lot of our staff, you know, will attend and be a part of that if they're Google, if they're trained, certified, they can actually teach a session as well. But that's going to be a big deal for us. We also have our visioning tomorrow. I know several of you are attending and we're excited about that. Mary Eggers will be back with us again. And so she'll be with students and teachers at the 2 o'clock session and really getting a large volume of their input on both of the issues, kids in the middle, alternate diplomas, other diplomas. Is there something that we want to do curriculum-wise when we look at the future? And then also. And then also looking at service learning and civic engagement. How much are we doing, what are we doing, are we doing enough, do we need to do more? And really, I think hearing from our students as well. They did do a survey that was posted on SchoolAG where Mr. Bird has some kind of just good data about the kind of community service our kids are doing right now. So, I think it's going to be really exciting, and I think both sessions will be different because the one in the evening is community. So, I encourage, you know, anybody that is watching, or if you have a friend or a neighbor, their plans change at the last minute, they can come and check in. If they can register, it helps us because we try to balance our tables so that it's just not all friends sitting together. The other thing I'm going to just mention very quickly, but I don't want to say too much tonight is, because Maeve is not with us, but she did receive a wonderful scholarship through UVA, we'll honor her when she's here. So, I want to acknowledge that, but since she wasn't with us tonight, we thought we're going to wait so we can kind of all give her the accolades she deserves. Because as far as we know, we think she is the one and only that we've had at Falls Church who has actually received a full, full ride, so.
Jefferson Scholarship?
Yeah. And so, we will recognize her when she's with us, we don't want her to miss her, her own accolades. Yeah, so thank you.
That's great, Dr. Jones for the visioning session tomorrow afternoon and tomorrow night. How many folks do we have coming at this point that you know of?
I think in the evening session, it was about 80 right now. And then the day session, of course, it's an early release and we did that intentionally because we wanted huge staff engagement. So, every staff member will be there from George Mason. And then, I'm not sure how many students, I want to say they were up to about 20, I think. It's, they're trying to grab those kids before they go to athletics and other activities. And I told Mr. Bird if we would just really emphasize the community service aspect, they all are really interested in that. So, I'm hoping they got the word out, because we really need to hear from them. And we need to hear from diverse group of students that are involved in different activities and different levels.
All right, thanks for that, moving right along, we have board and student liaison comments. We do have a student liaison this evening, so we won't go there, we'll start with Ms. Warren.
A booster meeting was last night, and I missed because I went to an away lacrosse game, which we won, our first one, hooray, by a lot. And the girls won too. So, I have, have nothing to report, I expect to get an email giving me the minutes, so I just keep up to date with what they're doing. But as far as I know, nothing major's going on.
All right, thank you very much, Mr. Ankuma?
Yes, I attended my first PT essay at George Mason, but it wasn't a, it wasn't the, the formal meeting, even though I met the, the chair. It was a presentation by a group, an organization, well, it was a, two, the Yonahs presented it, but it had to do with wellness and, and counseling for kids and all the things they're going through, kind of interesting. And I, I plan to reach out to see if that presentation is something I could lay my hands on. But that was the meeting, that was pretty much the whole presentation there from, I, I've forgotten the name of the group. Wait a second, I may have their card. I tend to keep these things in here, so. That's it, Project SAFE, Strategies Aimed at Family Empowerment, Group, Family, and Individual Counseling. That's who did the presentation. Pretty good, it's pretty good, telling us about kids and, you know, the changes they're going through at different stages and what parents and teachers should look out for. So, it was quite informative. I was also at the Chamber of Commerce Board Meeting this morning. Not much substantive, nothing substantive, other than the, you know, the usual rah-rah after the gala, which was pretty successful on Saturday. I guess Karen was there as well. I had to bail out early, had a previous engagement. But, yes, so they, they talked about the gala, which is, like I said, pretty successful. And Maeve and her mom represented, Maeve's dad received an award, and so Maeve and her mom were out there at this, at the podium to receive that for them. So, that was, that was good, because her dad was out of town. And then just another quick update, yes, this morning about plans moving on the West and Broad project and the spectrum and, you know? I guess we're expecting those kids sometime soon, so, whenever that comes around. We do have, there was a, there was a ribbon, no, there was a groundbreaking today at the, for the.
For Chinatown?
Yeah, Lincoln Properties thing, so I didn't make it, but there was that. And so, that and the, obviously the Harris Teeter stuff is going on full steam ahead. If anybody else has any updates, let us know.
Wonderful, Mr. Castillo?
I would just advise everybody who gets a chance to go watch the George Mason girls soccer team. They're doing very well and their, the games are extremely entertaining. Don't know how it turned out tonight, but I, I have a feeling, I know, I don't know. The, just, I, I gave the board a little bit of a heads up, the process of searching for a city attorney is, is moving along. Was involved in interviews, I was really impressed by the slate of candidates that we have. And I, I think over the next few days and weeks, we will, we will reach an endpoint to our search and I think we're, we'll be in a great position. The past two town hall meetings for the budget have been well attended and I've been impressed by the, the turnout and the interest of citizens. And we've got some technology meetings coming up in the next few days, which I'm looking forward to. And other than that, it's, it's very quiet these days in Falls Church.
All right, and Mr. Sharp?
I've been attending the Partnership for Youth's planning sessions that they're looking toward next year and trying to get sort of reorganized. They do have a presentation to the Board of Supervisors later this week. On April 30th, they'll have a shopping day at the, well, it's the Neiman Marcus Last Call, which is sort of their, their sec, their, their off-price facility at the mosaic in, in Merrifield. That's on April the 30th, and you would, if you buy a ticket, you get $20 off of what you, whatever you buy. You pay $10 for that, and the $10 goes to the Partnership for Youth. So, they, they provided that kind of partnership for this fundraiser. Also, there's a golf tournament with the Partnership for Youth on May the 12th, which I hope many of you will want to enjoy. That, sign up for that is on the Partnership for Youth's website, which is the FairfaxYouth.org. The BIE recent meeting was very, very well attended, mainly due to Mary Beth Conley's good recruiting for current members and new members. And you saw some of the fruits of that this evening with appointment of a new member for the upcoming term that would begin in July from Body Dynamics. I did attend just briefly the GM planning meeting, there's really a great work going on there, thank you Susan and John. Very, very diligent work and great, many outside folks are, are being asked to come in and speak, and many more planned to do so. And I think those additional expert consultations will be very, very helpful there. I, I do want to suggest that Susan's recommendation, I think at our last meeting, that we not just look at the particular site that we're concerned about up at GM, but that we also think about the economic development that could occur at other sites in the city. And that those might be a source of, of funding for the, the school development that we need and the ongoing school operations. But also, there may be some opportunity for additional school sites if there are, just as there's kind of a private-public potential arrangement up at GM, we may find that similar opportunity elsewhere. And so, I, I hope that the, the planning group will continue down that path. Michael mentioned the Chamber Gala, and I was very, very happy to attend that, I know Tony was also there, Mary Beth Conley, and a number of the city council members, Don Byer, who's a candidate for Congress. Maeve Curtin was there with her mom to accept the humanitarian award on behalf of her dad, who's been working with the DC Central Kitchen. Gordon Tees was the pillar of the community award winner. And I got my picture taken, which my wife may not like too much, but I got my picture taken with Miss Vietnam of Washington DC. And had a very nice chat with her because she is currently a student at GMU, but she previously was a student and then graduate at Falls Church High School. And she was there during, and her siblings were going through Falls Church High, a point where they were changing from one kind of calendar to another and then back again. They had the traditional calendar for many years, then switched to a modified calendar to begin in mid-August. And then they switched back at the time the recession hit. And I asked her about what the differences seemed to be there, and, and she, she generally thought the, the early calendar was, was a good thing. But she also said that in, in her particular case, it didn't really matter very much, because she was a member of the marching band. And they started in the first week of August, even before the, the early calendar modified program was, was to begin. She was there and she was, you know, getting ready for school, and it was, it was something that she, she was used to. And, and she was getting into the academic re, you know, reconditioning at that point, if you will. Our old friend Karen Akar was also at the dinner, she used to be our school's publicity communications person. And she's now a similar position for the Fairfax County Park Authority. Just before coming here tonight, I was pleased to review a display of art by the children who are in the Homestretch Program. And that display is at the United Bank up on Route 7, near Tyson's Corner. It's going to be there for an additional two weeks, and it's a really, really great display. I encourage you all to go by and see it, it, it gives you a great insight into what their experience is and what their families' experiences are and what Homestretch does, which is help homeless families to transition back to regular participation in the community. I did attend the school board budget forum on the Thursday night, and then the city budget forum on Saturday, and I agree, both were very well attended and lots of good questions. Very pleased to see Lou Olum there, and I know he, he expressed, I think, a very strong support for continuing the kind of school effort that he began, to have an even better school system here than what we could obtain anywhere else. And he remains firmly convinced that we still have that. And I think Maeve helped us to confirm that, that, that is the case at our last work session meeting, when we had the opportunity to hear her talk about the differences between her experience in the IB program and what she was able to learn about similar high school experiences that others were having in the area with AP and, and all that that involves. I, I think she was very articulate in, in describing why the IB program is, is a really strong preparation for the kind of college activity that, that she expects to have and that she's, she's heard that those who have graduated from George Mason and other high schools in the area have, have had. And I know at the, the forum that was on Saturday, when, when a person questioned about the, the quality of what our students are able to do, I'm hopeful that Maeve will, will help with some, some, some education about why, why our program is still, is still probably the best in the area. And lastly, I hope we, we will have a celebration to close at TJ. And I would hope we can get some invitations out to people who were also instrumental in getting that done, to people who were, who were on the board at an earlier point in time and helped to, to put that effort together. And, and also, I think, are eager to see the, the close of that, of that project, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Webb?
Real quick, was, took part in the school board forum on last Thursday evening, was pretty well attended. Susan and I were, were speakers at that forum that I thought was very educational for a lot of folks, of learning a little bit more about the process. And my role was kind of giving that perspective of seeing, saying that the budget process from both sides of a member of city council as well as a member of the school board, and just kind of giving the perspective of how thorough the process really is of looking at, in some cases, I thought that the schools gets a little bit more into the weeds of point two employees than you do see on certain things on the city side of not getting that detailed. But I thought it was a, a good opportunity for us to kind of educate the community, and I hope that we have other opportunities like that. And hopefully, as Susan has suggested to the council, that we can start doing some of that type of work immediately after the budget season wraps up. And then finally, the other thing I'll do is just remind folks, as well as my colleagues here, if you have not already, to make sure that you purchase your tickets for the, for the gala for the Falls Church Education Association on Friday, May 16th. Thank you.
All right, Mr. Lawrence?
Just one thing, we've mentioned Maeve a lot tonight, I just want to point out that she's not here tonight because she's fulfilling her duties as the, the best buddies person. She founded the chapter at GM, and she's, I believe, still the head of it, so she would be here normally, but she's, she's doing her best buddies work tonight. Just a couple of things, on SchoolAG, as a parent, you know, I, I use it every day, my son uses it every day. It's, it's really wonderful, you just have to learn how to use it. I've talked with some teachers, and it's clear that the, the biggest problem to making it really useful in homes is the parents aren't figuring out how to use it. And they're expressing frustration and, you know, they're, they're more the problem than the solution. But, you know, it'll, it'll happen. And having some, remember, this time, I think last year or two years ago, we approved a French book, which, you know, thank God we got the online version because, you know, books get left at school, and at one point, we, you know, I knew we had Tabronche and we'd gotten the online version, so we went and he was able to get his homework done simply because we had done that, otherwise he would have been out of luck. Spent a lot of time in the last few weeks going to construction meetings on the RFP. We've been keeping, for, for Mount Daniel, we've been keeping Supervisor Faust, very well informed, we, we met with him the other day. I've talked with the school board member from Fairfax for the Drainsville District. We have kept Congressman Moran involved and the neighbors, so we're, we're trying to keep everybody around there aware of what's going on. I've also been on the, the GM meetings. And finally, I, I just wanted to point out one thing, because when we were going through the budget, it, it hit me, and I sort of joked with Tony here, that the, the daycare program budget contingency fund is equal to the entire school division contingency fund. It was just sort of ironic, this daycare program has 350,000, and I'm not even sure we still have that now. But it just shows that, you know, our, our discussion about contingency funds and Michael, you know, talking about how we'd like to have some more, that really put it in perspective if our daycare program has the same as the entire division.
Rapidization at work.
All right, thank you. For my comments, I won't say a lot about the town hall last Saturday, because a few of my colleagues have mentioned that. I do want to very specifically thank the VFW, the CBC, the Democrats and Republican Parties in Falls Church for pulling together and sponsoring last Thursday evening, the forum on the budget and sustainable schools, which was just a terrific evening event. This is the second forum that, that, that group of civic organizations has pulled together, and I think it's just a fantastic resource for our city to have them doing that. Specifically, I want to thank Carol Lofterton, who was the, who convened us here and did a great job of, of managing the panel. And also Sally Eckfeldt, who moderated the Q and A section, they did a really great job. So, thanks everybody for making that happen, because from the school board's perspective. because, um, from the school board's perspective, the more community, um, understands our budget and how we think about educating our kids and the resources we need, the better it is. In terms of, uh, Lawrence Webb's participation in that event, I thank you very much. I think you did a great job of helping people in the community understand that our process is, um, quite detailed and in-depth, and there's a lot of discussion, and there are a lot of community, um, opportunities to comment, and, um, that we do a quite thorough job here, and we're very proud of our work. So, thanks for, thanks for that, Lawrence. I appreciate that. Um, in terms of the budget, um, I want to let my colleagues know and also the community know that, uh, I continue to meet with, uh, any number of folks, um, in the city council to, to help them understand how we got to our budget and, and to discuss their thoughts. I had an opportunity to have coffee with Phil Duncan, who chairs the city council's Budget and Finance Committee, and we had a good conversation. Justin Castillo and I had our weekly sit-down with the mayor and the vice mayor last Saturday at seven-thirty in the morning. I feel like it's too many seven-thirty in the morning meetings for me. Um, and, uh, a good part of the conversation that we had was on the budget and the schools and where we're coming from and what's going on in the city, so, um, I also hope that my colleagues here on the dais are continuing to talk with, you know, their buddies, and I think that, that they are. Um, we're really trying this year to be, if anything, overly collaborative to make sure that everybody understands what the key issues are. So, um, we'll see how that moves forward. I think, um, we'll know more in another week or so about where city council's, um, head is on our budget. Um, in terms of things coming up that are fun to know about and for us to all participate in, um, I mentioned this Thursday morning at seven-thirty upstairs in the Oak Conference Room. We'll have the next meeting of the George Mason Process Committee. Um, on April sixteenth, which is next Wednesday, there will be a gang-of-eight meeting pre, prior to the city council meeting, and I'm not sure the location. It'll be posted. Look for that if, um, that's, uh, going on. For my colleagues, if there are things you'd like to make sure are on the agenda for that meeting, please let me know, um, because we have not set the agenda quite yet. I'm sure there'll be a budget update, but, but we'll see what else there is. Um, we have our next work session at seven o'clock in the central office on April twenty-second, where we have a few items to chat about that will be, um, that agenda will be posted soon. On April twenty-sixth, uh, starting at nine o'clock in the central office conference room, we have the school board's retreat on governance. And please, 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 everybody be there bright and early and on time because we have a lot to do there. Um, and, and we'll run till noon, twelve-thirty, and we'll see where we are and whether we've made some decisions or whether we need to schedule a second session. And then finally, I will, um, add on to Lawrence's, um, comment about the gala on May sixteenth, and just let people know that, um, I go to the gala every year, and it's always a lot of fun, but I have to say last year was the absolute best. It was just absolutely wonderful at Washington and Golf, sitting outside on the back terrace on a beautiful night. So many people there that I knew as my children grew up in the schools and got a chance to reconnect with, and people I'd never met before that I got a chance to know. So, if you haven't bought your tickets, you know, you probably better do it quickly because they do sell out, and they're still looking for sponsors for that as well. So, if you work with a business or know of a business that might want to sponsor the gala for us, um, you know, please, uh, let Debbie know that. So, that's, I think, that'll take us pretty much through the Memorial Day Parade, right? Where we get to, where the rookies get to ring the bell and ring it during the parade. You didn't know about that initiation ritual, did you? So, that's coming up. All right, very good. So, uh, the next item we have is approval of minutes. Um, I'm going to ask for unanimous consent that we approve the minutes of February eighth, eleven, eighteen, and twenty-five, March fifth, eleventh, and twentieth, unless someone has objection. All right, without objection, that's so ordered, and so we've approved our minutes. Uh, there are a couple of things for board review here under those materials. Um, and unless there are other things we need to discuss this evening, we will call it a night, and we will adjourn. All right, very good. Thank you, everybody.